Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the City of Temple City, February 6, 2024, to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. First, we have the invocation led by Pastor Massisca from One Hope Temple City. Please all rise for the invocation and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow and pray. Father God, what a privilege it is to partner in ministry and service with this great city. Lord, I've only been pastor in this city for a short time, my first year, but already, Lord, we've forged some great friendships within this community. Lord, as the plans that we make going forward, especially with this Camellia Festival and events that the city has planned, Lord, I pray that you would bless them. I pray that you would bless our conversations and the plans that the city makes would be in coherence with your plans as well and that you would bless these things going forward. Lord, I pray that you would keep the events safe, that people would be protected, and that in everything that we do, it would be an honor and glory to you. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight, Councilmember Sternquist will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Next, before we move on to ceremonial matters, I'd like to ask our city attorney to report out on council closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council held a special meeting at 7:00 today, adjourned into closed session at 7:05 to discuss one matter of existing litigation, and then adjourned that at 7:19 with no reportable action taken. Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, for our ceremonial matters, we have something very special that we always look forward to every year, the Camellia Festival Royal Court introduction. So first, I would like to welcome and call up Ms. Kristi Ferntile, who is the Camellia Festival General Chairman, to introduce the royal court.
Oh, thank you for letting us come tonight. I'm Kristi Ferntile, and I'm General Chairman of the Camellia, and we appreciate that you're the official sponsor of the Temple City Camellia Festival. We have great volunteers that we work with, but without your support, it wouldn't have gone on for 80 years, which is our big cheer for 80 years this year. So I would like to introduce our Camellia Court to you. First off, we have banner carriers Alex Zhao and Mia Moran. Next, we have banner carrier Arthur Alvarado and Chloe Conger. Up next, we have Prince Luke Lozey and Princess Emma Lim. Next, we have Prince Lucas Chen and Princess Maya Lee. And lastly, we have King Desmond Ischieta and Queen Madison Chung. These children were selected from a group of Temple City first graders who took part in our annual play day, which was in November. They were judged on how they got along with others and following directions. In addition, each child had a chance to answer a question on a microphone. Part of their royal duties include opening their carnival, leading our Camellia Festival parade, and making special appearances such as this. All right, before I ask if you have any questions for them, I'd like to first have the parents give a little wave to thank you very much for bringing them all in today. And you know Don Terran, our festival director, Gina Aparicio, who is our governess for the royal court, and Jerry Jambezi, our official photographer. All right. And the kids have something that they want to show you. Can you guys turn around and face the council for a second? All right. They're very excited that this is the 80th year. So are we ready, guys? Are we ready? One, two, ready, go!
Two, two, twenty years! Two, two, twenty years! Two, two, twenty years!
One more. There we go. Very good. Now, do you have any questions for the kids tonight?
Council?
So what's the most fun thing you've done so far? Yeah. Coloring, oh. Play days. I heard you guys had some ice cream also, didn't you? Go ahead. Drawing, okay.
Hot chocolate what?
Hot chocolate.
All right. Well, okay, can you turn around one more time so the parents could take a quick picture of you guys? Quick picture.
The king had something with the king.
Oh, I'm sorry. Desmond, I'm sorry.
What did you have to say?
Oh, cool.
That's pretty cool. Good.
Can you tell us their first appearance?
All right, everybody face the audience, and let's take one more picture, and then... Oh, yeah, could we have the council come out and take a picture with them?
Yes, and we also have some certificates for the entire royal court that we'd also like to present.
Oh, that's fabulous. I'm gonna sit right down then.
Oh, and we have gifts.
Oh, you guys, okay, stand real still.
Can you all take one step forward? There you go. Perfect.
All right. So again, thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight. So I think we'll start with our banner carriers. First, we have Alex Zhao. Mia Moran. Arthur Alvarado. Chloe Ann Conger. We have Princess Maya Lee. Prince Lucas Chen. Princess Emma Lim. Prince Luke Loz. And of course, our Queen Madison Chung. And King Desmond Ischieta.
Okay, so you want to show Mr. Jambezi in your picture? Bernadette, you have to get in the picture.
You can't get out that one.
Okay, we're okay? Ready? Here we go.
Put your hand down, Mr. Jambezi.
Mr. Jambezi, big smiles. There we go.
Now, if you'll allow me, there was a tradition that was started many years ago in the sportsman's club where the king takes off his hat and the mayor can maybe wear...
Oh, I like that. There we go.
We're gonna take another picture.
Okay, everybody silence! You did a back rub. TempleCityPhotos.com! I love that. Good smiles, guys, good smiles.
Kristi, can you get in there?
Get your pictures.
Yep, sure. Okay, good. Oh, yeah, well, thank you.
Oh, upside down.
There we go. Okay, king, hold it up a little higher. There you go. All right, smile. Perfect, thank you. That's a good idea.
Take one more, they have a better picture. And then everybody, and then...
Okay, king, hold it up a little bit. There you go. Turn it around. Yep, there you go. Okay? Here we go, this will finish it. Perfect, thank you.
All right, now don't go anywhere, kids. Okay, now take your certificates and fold them close like a book. So that the pretty pictures on the inside? Pretty pictures on the inside, very nice. So close it, guys. Close it like a book. There you go. That way you're protecting the pretty.
What do you think? What's going on?
You guys are so lucky. Okay, there's also a tradition. What do we say when somebody gives us a gift? Oh, that was pretty good. How about all together?
Thank you!
Very good. We're gonna go out to say when we came in, two by two, with your partner, starting with the king and queen. Yes, don't wait until you walk out from the grid. There you go. All right, here you go. It's fine. Can I get homework on it?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for recognizing the 80th or 2024 royal court, as they will be known from this time forward. I probably should make an announcement with regards to the festival director. So as many people know, I had announced that I gave two years' notice with regards to the festival director job. Kathy Burrows, who is known to many of you, has agreed to come on as co-director. So I will be remaining as co-director with Kathy Burrows. So the committee actually voted on it last night. So you're still stuck with me, sorry. Thank you very much for having them and for all your kind thoughts. We really appreciate the support of the city.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you so much.
And again, thanks for all the parents for being here tonight. Thank you, have a good night. All right, next we move to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments they would like to address the city council at this time? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comments. We move on to consent calendar, which may be approved in a single motion unless anyone would like to remove an item for discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, we have public hearing, which we have none. Unfinished business, we also have none. New business item 10A, discussion of ordinance amending the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to improvement of public safety. And we'll start with our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. Before you tonight is a first reading of an amendment to an ordinance related to improvements in public safety. And I'll go through a little bit of a background, kind of the genesis of this, why this came about. My colleague, the city attorney, who assisted us in this process, will go through any technical questions that you may have. As you know, challenges in the public right-of-way, and this is a compendium, a compendium ordinance is coming right after this. So these are kind of one, there are two different ordinances, but they're trying to achieve the same thing. There has been challenges for those levels of behavior in the public right-of-way in areas where people partake in using the public right-of-way. So the ordinance tonight deals with several different elements in enhancing our current municipal code related to loitering, damage to public property, graffiti, open containers of alcohol, unlawful camping, and other storage of public property, of personal property in a public space. Part of the reason we're doing this is this is not a class, status-based type of approach to enforcement. This is about behaviors that we are looking to curtail in the public right-of-way, and we'll talk to you about the parks. This has nothing to do with the status of an individual or the status of a group of folks using our public right-of-way or, in case of the next ordinance, of our parks. We looked at this from many different angles. We consulted, the city attorney and I consulted with the sheriff's captain, as this is a model ordinance based on what the cities of San Gabriel and the cities of Duarte have done to really kind of combat some of the issues that the public is facing in using and traversing through the public right-of-way, be it an alley, be it on the sidewalk, be it in other parts of what we govern in terms of public use. So the ordinance has been adapted to deal with some of the issues that we've been seeing in the public right-of-way. This is also a compendium too, and I'll talk to about the parks program as well, some administrative regulations that we have recently adopted related to behavioral issues when people go on some of our field trips and use some of our facilities or go to other facilities and city-sponsored type of trips. Some of the keys to the ordinance is that these are trying to really deal with the community values that we are trying to uphold in a safe community, in a community that respects both individual rights, but at the same time deals with things in a compassionate and a fair manner, but still firm. Again, we did have consultation with the LASD captain, Captain Meza, about how this ordinance itself would be in practice, looked at as an additional tool for us to enforce things in the public right-of-way. Some of the lessons that were learned from some of the other communities is that, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to walk through this steadily. This is one tool of many for those who are exhibiting disturbing behavior in the public right-of-way. It's one of many tools that we have moving forward from both a compassionate standpoint but also a point of ensuring safety in the public right-of-way. So that, those, that's the summary of what we're trying to achieve. Again, some of the other elements are aggressive panhandling, possession of a catalytic converter, trespassing and fighting, those types of things that will, that is enhancing our existing ordinance to give that additional tool to our law enforcement team in order to make, continue to make Temple City a safe and inviting place to be in the public right-of-way and as people are using the conveniences and services that we provide. So, city attorney is here for any other questions. Our captain is here as well for any other questions that you may have.
I do just want to add, kind of at the start, the ordinance in front of you right now, as the city manager said, is strengthening the city's regulation of certain quality of life affecting conducts. So we're trying to bring the city's regulation of that conduct up to a vigorous legal standard. It's a legal standard that will survive a test because it's a legal standard in many cases that's taken from the most current judicial analyses of our ability to control quality of life issues. Should the council decide to move forward with this ordinance, then at your next meeting, when the second reading comes forward, there are some lessons that have been learned from the other cities that have adopted this in terms of the best practices for enforcement in talking with the sheriff's office, how to best enforce this strong, modern quality of life ordinance. And so if the council moves forward, then we'll be bringing that second piece to you at the next meeting. It's not in front of you tonight because if you wanted to make changes to this, if you had issues with this, we didn't want to roll everything out at once. But what I will say is that the sheriff's office, the captain expressed to me a good success in terms of how enforcement is handled and the benefits to the residents. So, you know, it's kind of a preview of what you'll see in two weeks. Enforcement can be done at a more local level rather than sending everything to the district attorney's office, and that's why we want to make the city's code the best that it can be. So yes, any other legal questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with council questions. We'll start with Councilmember Sternquist. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just happy that there is a tool that we can use and add to that toolbox, and the fact that, you know, some of our neighboring cities have used it and it's been successful is, makes me feel really good about implementing it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. So, let me see if I have this correct. We are creating some new tools, so to speak, in our ordinance that legally, we believe, have survived judicial scrutiny so far, I'm thinking you just said?
That's correct, sir.
So that's why we feel, or you feel, that we're on good legal ground for having such an ordinance in place.
Yes.
However, that's not the end of the story because I'm not sure what you mean by in two weeks, you're gonna come back with an addition to this ordinance or just how you, how you or the, how we or the sheriff intend to enforce those ordinance from a practical standpoint? And is that just gonna be in the form of a presentation to us or is it gonna be something for us to consider or have some say-so into how it's going to be enforced? I don't quite understand.
That's correct, yes. It would be a policy-level document, not an ordinance. But a policy-level document in which the city council will authorize a more local enforcement of this, consistent with what the sheriff's department and the cities of San Gabriel and Duarte that the city manager mentioned, consistent with what they've done to see success.
And where that is laid down is essentially you are no longer filing these cases with the DA. The city prosecutor will, you know, determine a date and time that bringing these cases together in kind of bundles and presenting them to the court so that the city prosecutor, rather than a DA, because quite frankly, the DA has, we've, part of the frustration for law enforcement and for cities has been the fact that these quality of life issues have not been filed by the DA's office and not for lack of judicial integrity or, and legal integrity, but more for the fact that it's not a priority and they're a busy organization and they're a busy entity. So some cities and many cities have taken it on to take this on themselves. For example, I'll give you an example.
Okay, well, before you go with the example, so that, to me, that means that's gonna cost us more money, that normally we would not be paying if we were to refer these to the district attorney's office.
That's correct.
And so when are we gonna get those numbers and is that gonna be part of the next discussion is where we go with that and how, who's gonna pay for that? That's...
That's exactly right.
Why isn't that with us tonight, then?
Because this ordinance stands on its own as modernizing and improving the city's code with respect to all of these issues.
But this ordinance has no, I guess, no teeth to it until we know how it's going to be enforced and who's gonna be paying for that enforced.
Well, we could be going to the DA with these filing. If this ordinance is passed, you do a second reading, we could be going to the DA tomorrow. Or, excuse me, when the ordinance was in effect.
But we feel that, or you feel that there perhaps may be a better way...
Exactly, sir.
...of enforcing these rather than going, for lack of a better term, the traditional district attorney. Now, isn't, that seems kind of, to me, circumventing the district attorney's office.
I would, I would say that in the same way that the city does property-based code enforcement, this is ensuring that individual conduct-based city code enforcement is handled at the local level. This is done by several larger cities, and it is more increasingly being done by the smaller cities due to, as the city manager said, the current district attorney offices' filing priorities.
So it sounds to me more and more like a political statement against the current district attorney's office than perhaps what the law is actually intended to do.
I see where you're coming.
I just don't, I have a hard time because I know we've had, this is the same stuff that we were talking about years ago when Gascon took office and people were unhappy with what he was doing after they voted him in, and now this seems to be another way of bypassing his office.
I see what you're saying, but again, the ordinance stands on its own, and that's why we wanted to bring the enforcement activity separately because the ordinance, again, were there, if, depending on the results of this November's district attorney election, it may be that the city doesn't have to prosecute these quality of life issues on its own. Certainly, these issues can be prosecuted by the district attorney's office. If the district attorney's office fails to prosecute them, then by strengthening your ordinance, you are giving the city of Temple City the option to prosecute them if they're going otherwise unresolved.
Okay, so in two weeks, we'll be hearing about those procedures and also the cost of doing that.
That is correct, sir.
Because obviously, nothing comes without a cost.
Absolutely correct, sir.
And who is going to be paying for that? The city, the sheriff, the city prosecutor?
That would be, that would be an adjustment in our budget to deal with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think certain things that Mayor Protem Ray asked, but, and I appreciate what he said, but I think, just for my own clarity, maybe I may ask the same question, but just for my own sake. So, Mr. City Manager, you're saying that, and Mr. City Attorney, you're saying that the enforcement will be another discussion, how this is actually implemented? So this is just, tonight, we're only looking at the ordinance itself? So the implementation as a policy is another discussion that will come at a different time and will also, and will vote on it also or just an information?
Sure. Well, you will, if you're, if you take the action tonight of the ordinance, you're giving us the direction, essentially to move forward with that ordinance. What will be coming to you at the next week, next meeting, would be any adjustments we would need with the city prosecutor's budget, and essentially, the city prosecutor, and as expressed in the staff report, the city prosecutor would be the implementer of this, similar to the fact, similar to the manner in which we enforce... similar to the fact, similar to the manner in which we enforce property-based ordinances as well.
And so, when it comes to prosecutorial discretion, it will remain in the office of the prosecutor, not in my office, not with the legislative body, but the city manager and the prosecutor working to execute the law. The legislative body, the five of you, continue to hold the purse strings, and so if you're unhappy with going a certain direction, if you're unhappy with the high-level policy of local enforcement, you can certainly say, "We don't want to go that way and we won't change the budget to allow it," and that's within your discretion.
And to that point, Mr. District Attorney, so even if we have approved this ordinance, would it be, we don't always have to, I guess, enforce it.
Correct.
It will be up to the city's discretion when to enforce it.
You can, people can be cited under the ordinance, but elevating from a citation to forcing payment of that citation through court means, that could be something that is not done. The citations are given and then, you know, we wait for them to be paid. That is certainly allowable, but again, that all gets to enforcement and how heavily, how strictly you wish the enforcement to go. So, that's, and as I said at the start, that's a discussion. If you've made the decision to move forward with the ordinance and then to have the second reading in two weeks, then at that second reading is a very good time to talk about the manner in which the city manager and the city prosecutor intend to move forward, working hand-in-hand with the sheriff on that.
So, perhaps I find it a little difficult to look at ordinance without actually looking at how it's being implemented. And, but, and then perhaps you're not ready to quite discuss it tonight, but I see the captain's out there.
We could do this. Perhaps the captain could give you some idea of his experiences.
Yeah, and I was going to go, maybe, maybe not the comprehensive discussion, but I see that the captain's ready to discuss and I'm actually curious in my mind how similar ordinance has helped you, Captain, in enforcing some of the laws in the other cities.
Yes, well, thank you, Mayor Protem and Team City Council. Yes, I did have the opportunity to review the ordinances with Mr. Cook, and I really believe that these ordinances will enhance public safety in Temple City. The city of Duarte has similar, or has identical ordinances that they've implemented, and they've experienced some positive outcomes in the past year and a half with them. You know, obviously notably, they've experienced a reduction of call for services relating to a lot of the habitual offenders. So, there's been obviously a decrease in calls for services. And what happens is when a, when we have somebody that, a certain individual that does one of these, violates one of these ordinances, our deputies will cite them, okay, under that ordinance. Previously, they would cite them under a county ordinance, okay? Now, they do it under the city ordinance. At that point, the city of Duarte has elected to file all their cases on one day, which is the third Tuesday, I believe, of every month, okay? So, that day, the city attorney will, you know, will go in front of a judge and present the cases, okay? So, it's been, and we've had a lot of positive outcomes from that, whether it's from requiring some of these individuals to attend, you know, rehabilitation. We've had some stay-away orders. We've actually had some people even spend some time in jail, okay, as well as some, giving them some probation. So, we've had some positive outcome as a result of these ordinances because we've experienced some challenges with the district attorneys when we presented to them. I'll tell you right now, the district attorney's office, they have a directive that any of these quality-of-life issues, it's dismissed. So, what happens is these individuals are, that are obviously going out there and, you know, disrupting, harming the community, they know that there's no repercussions. So, by implementing these ordinances, it just gives us another tool. Obviously, our deputies are going to look for a peaceful solution, but nevertheless, by having these ordinances and working with the city of attorney's offices, you know, they can speak on behalf of the city. So, I believe that it's going to be beneficial. I can assure you right now, the city of Duarte is very, very happy with them and they've had a positive outcome. Again, a lot, like I mentioned, they, the calls for service related to a lot of these habitual offenders, they don't see them as much anymore because they, they've kind of got the message.
Is that because they, they know what Duarte's doing and they leave the city?
They leave the city.
And they come to Temple City for...
Obviously, that's what we don't want. That's what we don't want because I know that, that's what I brought up.
So, they go to salvage money or something.
So, that's how it kind of, just kind of an overview how it's worked in the city of Duarte.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. What about, this is one last question, and maybe for the city manager or state attorney?
Yes, sir.
So, do we need to enforce it? Can city staff enforce it? A co-enforcement officer enforces or must we call the sheriff's department?
In the case of these individual ones, the municipal code, it will depend. But generally speaking, for this ordinance, it will be primarily law enforcement personnel. For the next ordinance you're about to hear and consider, that will, that will be on an administrative civilian level.
Okay. Let's all have fun now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Councilmember, you was asking just about all the questions I had in mind. One thing I'm not clear on, Greg, you kept using the term prosecutor's office. Is that the same prosecutor that works for the DA?
No, that's, the city has a city prosecutor that primarily does land-based code enforcement cases. So, when your code enforcement staff has reached a point that citations on a property-related matter are still not getting resolution of that and code compliance, they turn it over to the city prosecutor's office. It's a different law firm than my own. They've done a great job. They've been with the city for years, and so the initial intent would be to, with the council's permission and as the city manager said, with a budget adjustment, to utilize them for prosecution of these matters because they're used to handling city code work and they're used to going in and seeing those particular judges.
Without violating what our previous meeting did?
Sure.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, same, same for, exactly right, sir.
I wasn't clear.
Yes, thank you very much, sir.
And then, well, I was going to ask a question about do our staff have the authority to cite people at all? Or are we going to go in that direction? I don't know.
Again, I would want to be careful with that because this first ordinance is very, for lack of a better term, I'm not going to use the right word, but very law enforcement-based in some ways. I would want to be careful with that. The next ordinance, very comfortable with staff enforcing that ordinance in terms of the park, and we have a process, and I'm actually, as the city manager, involved in that process as well. Because this is dealing with individual type of behavior that is, has like a risk level that, just not to be disparaging, but that civilian staff do not have or not is equipped to deal with, I think from a risk level standpoint, I think we're better off many times having our law enforcement team as the enforcement arm and the boots on the ground that deal with that ordinance and enforcing it.
And I would add that, and this will come at greater length next, at next meeting, and I apologize for that, but when enforcing this ordinance, we're not looking for minimal cases. The city's intent is not to, not to seek out people who are really not harming the quality of life, but who might be a technical violator. City's intent is to seek out people who are, as they say, harming the quality of life for everyone around and who may be posing a danger to themselves or to other people. And by doing that, law enforcement tends to be the better people to really understand when is it time to enforce, when is it time to give a warning, and they're best trained for this.
So, are you saying that the sheriff... Go ahead.
Don't we have an ordinance that says the park's got to be vacated after 10:00 at night?
And on the park one, in, after we're done with this one, this is the citywide graffiti, illegal dumping, storage of personal property, with respect to the park one, which we'll get to in a few minutes.
I'll let her rest it.
Yes, thank you, sir.
So, the law is not vague. It's, there are certain things that are going to be violations.
Right.
So, are you saying that the sheriff is going to have the discretion to arrest some people but not other people for the same violation?
No.
Well, that's what I just heard. Because it's like you said, "Well, we're not out there to just give, to cite people. We're going to look at other things." I don't remember the exact words, but it sounded to me like, "Well, we might cite people for this, but again, we might not." And it's going to be up to the sheriff to control that?
So, what I was saying was we're not looking for marginal cases. We're looking for...
What is a marginal case? Either you violate the law or you don't.
Well...
That's what I always say.
I can provide, I'll be happy to provide an example.
Okay.
So, for example, for our parks patrol staff that come at 10:00 at night, there may be a few people who are hanging out and maybe someone has an open container of alcohol or something like that, sees them once at the park, asks them to move on, but we also have had individuals using...
But that would be a violation of the law.
It would be a violation of the law, but we've, we've, we've take, we try to make the effort to educate individuals, have them understand our rules, have them understand what type of acceptable behavior there is at our facilities. We have other individuals who are, who have habitually been at the park, had open containers of alcohol. Our staff and along with our enforcement, our law enforcement staff know that individual, have cited them many times before, and now would step in for whatever how many times it is, it's the fifth or sixth time, to essentially go from just the mere citation to an arrest.
And Mr. Cook, if you don't mind me adding on that?
Sure.
Is, you know, we're, you know, our deputies, we go by the spirit of the law and the letter of the law, okay?
Yeah, I hope you do.
Yeah, obviously, our goal is anything else is to look for a peaceful solution. So, if we go and we contact an individual, could we get a call for service, let's say it's a park? And, you know, our goal is, you know, they might be in violation because they might be, you know, after 10:00, however, they were maybe not aware of it, okay? So, for in that instance, we let them know, hey, the park is closed.
Wait, because they're not aware that they're violating the law, that's cause not to violate them?
Well, again, we have...
I don't think that's, I don't think that's ever been the law.
Can, I just...
Because if someone's violating something, we're still, we still have the, we still have the authority to speak to them and give them an opportunity to maybe comply, okay, to look for a peaceful resolution. So, if they, if, if they're, and if they do comply, then, you know, we've seeked the peaceful resolution. Now, if they do not want to, then it gives us another tool to be able to say, hey, if they're not, then we can obviously cite them. Now, if they're habitual and they continue to do it, then it just gives us another, you know, gives us another tool to be able to just cite them right then and there because we've already given enough warning.
So, perhaps one violation isn't going to be warned, isn't going to warrant an arrest, but multiple violations would? That doesn't seem to be very...
Well, there is the wording under the proposed ordinance would also add a new section that makes it an infraction or misdemeanor to vandalize, deface, break in, or injure structures within the city. So, I'm assuming with that wording that something would be an infraction to, to the ordinance if, say, for example, a kid was scratching on the glass, different than a kid graffitiing the whole, you know, windows or section there. So, when I first saw that, I thought, well, how do you decide, to your point, if it's an infraction or a misdemeanor? So, I guess it would be the level of the incident, right?
Well, the sheriff, the sheriff's office arrests people for things. They don't prosecute.
No.
And they don't judge either. Those are three different areas. You simply, you guys are out there to enforce the law. And then what happens to the case after that is up to the prosecutorial body and the judge that's ruling on it, obviously. And I think the frustration that I hear is coming from this ordinance and from what we're doing, and other cities are doing, is the frustration is, we're arresting people, but they're not getting prosecuted and they're not going to jail, and the same thing's happening over and over. So, that leads to the frustration, I think, of the cities to find another way to enforce and to make our city a safe place to live, how we envision that. My only concern is, is how much discretion we're giving. I don't, I trust that our sheriffs are going to do the right thing. I have no problem with that whatsoever. The concern I have is what happens after you guys do it, you know, and I guess, I guess we have to wait to see because rather than going the DA route, which so far has not worked apparently, we're going the city prosecutor's route, but I guess we'll only be happy with that as long as the city prosecutor does what we believe that we want them to do.
Can I ask a question?
And then, hold on one second, I just want to finish. And then my last question is, will you, will the office, will your office be able to handle these additional cases? And also, will the city prosecutor be able to handle these?
Captain, yes, we've talked with the city prosecutor. The city prosecutor has dealt with ordinances similar to this in other jurisdictions throughout the county and throughout the state and from a workload capacity standpoint, and we talked about their efficiency in dealing with those cases and we said, obviously, we do not want this to be a cost-burden type of situation as well. That's why they would go to court in one day with multiple cases, try to find the efficiencies in the manner in which they, and we're dealing with the, for lack of a better term, heavily labor-intensive habitual issues, not the occasional issue.
But then it wouldn't be an infraction, right? It would be someone who's, it is a misdemeanor. So, when I saw infraction, infraction makes it seem like it's, you know, not a big deal.
As you said, there are, in anything here, there are levels of violation.
Right.
And so, there is...
That discretion to them.
There's an enforcement discretion to say, "Do we enforce this as an infraction? Do we enforce this as a warning, as an infraction, or as a misdemeanor?" And if it's a misdemeanor, then it's going to be filed.
And I think that's important wording because that tells you that they have the discretion to do that.
And for us, it wouldn't be no luck, no change. The only change would happen, we would just, instead of citing an individual for a county ordinance, you know, a county code or a penal code, we would just cite them for the, for the Temple City municipal code.
I think we started out by talking about a model that exists now, and that's, what was it, the city of Duarte?
Yes, has one, yes.
And that seems to be moderately successful.
It is.
And this is patterned after that, isn't it?
That is correct, sir.
To a large degree. I'm comfortable with that, and I do think that deputies should have some wide discretion in enforcement. I think that's necessary, that they can exercise their judgment as to the severity of whatever the infraction is and the effect it's having on anybody else. So, I don't have a problem with it.
I think, Brian, so when you stated that it's not for that minimal level, I think what it needs to be, it's a tool to actually get to the people who are doing this on a much higher level and be held accountable, which they're not, and hopefully you can, you know, deter people from getting to that level by a warning or by giving an infraction.
Well, we do right now have people that are, you know, that are doing some of these crimes right now or disorderly conduct, yet we're not getting any, any, any assistance from the DA's office, just to say that way.
So, they keep...
Okay, for that sake. So, they're just going to keep on doing it, whereas here, we're going to have an opportunity where the city attorney is going to be able to go there and present the case on the city's behalf.
Well, it's assuming they win the case if we go that way.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the questions. I also have a few. Since we're talking about the... Since we're talking about the, the county penal code versus a potential city municipal code, is, is it correct to say that the sheriffs cannot cite a county penal code and then refer it to the city prosecutor? A, a county penal code automatically goes to the, the DA?
That, that is correct, the city, city prosecutor, whether it's through the office of the city attorney or as here, a separate office, city prosecutor can only handle the city code, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second, how would this ordinance apply, if at all, to county or school district facilities? So example being LA County Library, right next door, and all the school district properties within the city, but technically they're, they're in jurisdiction.
That, this ordinance applies, uh, to all properties, public and private, and all public right-of-way within the city. This is a conduct-based ordinance, if the conduct occurs within the city, uh, the conduct can be cited. If on private property, it's almost certainly the case that we would be seeking the private property owner to refer the matter to us. If someone were caught graffitiing on private property, one of the major issues here is graffiti. Someone were caught graffitiing private property and the private property owner either caught them doing it or had pictures of them and was able to refer them, um, that would be fine. If police officer, or if the, the deputies caught somebody in the act, they could act on private property. Same with school properties, same with, with county property.
And on, in the same vein, how does that apply to railroad right-of-way?
Same thing, as long as it's within the city limits, uh, that's within our jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, we do have a public comment period, so, uh, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone who would wish to address the city council at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment and we'll move to council, uh, discussion and comments. I know we've maybe got a little bit of a head start, but maybe we'll start with, uh, this side, with, uh, Councilmember Viscara.
I think we've beat it to death. I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember you.
Be supportive of, of, of the, uh, proposition.
Thank you, Councilmember you.
Uh, likewise, um, I, I think I can support this, although very, very curious as to how we actually will end up implementing it.
Uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, I'm fine, I support it.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Vince, I'm, I'm, I'm day one, I think, been supportive of this ordinance. And when it was first presented to us, I don't recall, though, that we were gonna have a separate discussion regarding enforcement and why we didn't have that discussion with it all together, I have no idea. But apparently, it is what it is, but it's almost like, it's like we're doing something, but we don't know how we're gonna do it, or where we're gonna do it, or who's gonna pay for that. I would, I would kinda like to know that before I agree to passing an ordinance that's going to affect people. So it seems to me a kind of backwards way of, of doing things.
So Mayor Protem, I mean, would you be more comfortable if you, we get both at the same time before we vote on?
I would have been, but again, I, I, I understand the, the intent of the law, and I don't disagree with it. I guess we just have to wait to see, uh, what the presentation is going to be, or the policy, so to speak, of the enforcement, and I'm, I'm kind of unclear, but I suppose if we disagree with that policy, then passing this ordinance was kind of a exercise in futility.
I, I, I guess I can say that the primary aspect that we'll discuss, but we'll discuss it in more depth, is the concept of the city prosecutor handling prosecution of these conduct-based code violations. Um, so you've, you've got a, a good head start on that, hearing from, um, the captain about how that's worked in another city.
Well, I've only worked one other city.
In one other city, um.
Which happens to be the same city that our station deals with as well.
So it's, it's the most firsthand knowledge we could possibly have, uh, and it is.
Do we know any other cities that have used this? And has it been challenged in the courts, are you aware of?
Not at all.
Okay.
In fact, uh, for example, the city of Long Beach has a separate elected city attorney and elected city prosecutor, and has for years. And the city prosecutor.
So that would be an example of another city who has done something.
Who's done something like this, and they've, they've had that for decades, with the city prosecutor prosecuting violations of, of just the municipal code. Um, it's, it's a fairly, as I say, fairly standard in large cities. The city of Los Angeles City Attorney's Department has a large prosecutorial division. Uh, it's only more recently that smaller cities have decided to, uh, take on the burden due to really wanting to ensure certain quality of life issues get enforced. Um, but the, the primary reason we wanted to wait was, if the council was not interested in modernizing the ordinance itself, then there was no real need to get into a detailed point-by-point discussion of how the modernized ordinance would be enforced, um, as it stands.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I just, as a policymaker and as a decision maker, I would have preferred to have all that information together to make more of an informed decision with everything in front of us, but obviously, that's a moot point at this point, but, uh, and if I recall, I thought when we first brought, this was first brought to us, you had some concern about the legality of this ordinance.
No, it, it was never the legality, um, and, and I'll, I, I'm happy to have that discussion again, but no, I, I never had concern about the legality. I, I had some concern about the practical application, but after talking with the captain, uh, I was more than won over that the practical application was a positive.
And that's what we're gonna discuss in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of what my concern was tonight, is the practical application. You've put it in good terms, good way, all right, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, first, first I wanna say, you know, in terms of getting a gauge of how this would actually work, I, I think I appreciate the, what I understand is a discussion between our city manager, city attorney, and our captain. And presumably, our captain also has a fair understanding of all the deputies that patrol and service Duarte and, and have encountered these issues, so, uh, in terms of a litmus test, in terms of the practicality side, perhaps maybe even without the in-depth presentation, I have at least a confidence in the team that they've vetted that enough and knowing what council would ask, um, that that's been, been thought, thought over thoroughly. Uh, I, I do agree that, uh, I, I think it's a little bit of a surprise to me to hear that it's, that part of the discussion is gonna be deferred. Um, I would agree that having all that information together would have kind of made the policy kind of choice now a lot more concrete. And, and I guess maybe one question is, you, there was questions about the cost, so is the matter of cost simply because we don't have the costs yet, or it's, like, there's other factors that need to be considered to? Because to me, it's, it sounds like you're doing an estimate of the number of hours that the prosecutor would have to spend, and you're, you've kind of alluded to it being done in one day, right? So, uh, I'm not sure if that's, is there like another angle of this ordinance that could alter a cost estimate for that?
I don't believe so, I think, and, and speaking with the city prosecutor as well, um, essentially, what the city prosecutor asked me is like, how many, how many are you gonna have a month? Two or three, at, at best, two or three cases? And that's, it's hard for us to know, I mean, I think it depends on what we're seeing in the, in the field, but, um, I, I, I have a good amount of confidence that it will not be a enormous dollar amount that's coming, uh, with that, and I'll even look and see if the existing.
You know you are dealing with lawyers, right?
We are dealing with lawyers, but a process that, that the, the peers firm, um, our city prosecutor, excuse me, has dealt with elsewhere, and, um, and so much of the work is being done on the law enforcement side as well, that it's not something, a case filing that's as complicated as other issues that we've deal, we deal with, with more complicated property-based activities.
And I think there's a greater cost to not doing something, I mean, if, if you're constantly having to repair, you know, defacing of property or whatever it may be, I mean, I, I think that cost can be offset by.
Well, I'll give you an example, the, during, I'll give you an example, during the summertime at Live Oak Park, they kept breaking the, the toilets or, and stuff, it was ridiculous. Kick, uh, just really quick, quick, quick clarification question, because I agree with Fernando, we're kind of beating this to death, right? Did you say that?
He did.
I bet you did. When you say city prosecutor, who are we really referring to? Are we referring to a firm, to an individual, to individuals within a firm? Can we just use their name?
Yeah, sure, DePere Roseblitz is, is the firm that's our city prosecutor, our authorized.
And, and it won't just be one guy out there, it'll be whoever they assign to maybe that month or to whatever cases we're gonna give them.
Yeah, and talking to Ken DePere as well, they, they have some specialized attorneys who deal with that.
So it won't be the guy that's doing the cases for us, perhaps, those are more civil-type cases.
Right.
It should be somebody who's more experienced with criminal cases.
Correct.
Because these are still criminal cases.
The, these are still criminal cases and, um, but it will be, and their, their firm is actually gearing up because others, it appears as though other cities may be going down this route.
Doesn't Pasadena have a city prosecutor's office?
Yes.
And they've had that for a long time, if I can remember. Because I remember going to court and, and, and we'd have, we'd have cases with, but I thought that the city prosecutor's office is kind of downsized over there for some reason.
I couldn't.
Do you know, Greg, if, what's the story on that?
I, I don't know the Pasadena story, no.
Well, I guess go, going back to the Duarte kind of, uh, as, as kind of like a litmus test, I think from, from what I heard tonight, uh, that's the part that kind of leads me to believe that this is something worthy to be considered. Um, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it would be safe to say that if we were to adopt such an ordinance and if it were to be implemented, we're not adding an additional workload on our, on our deputies, right? This is simply an additional tool in their toolbox that they can use in the course of what they do, patrolling and enforcing the laws in our city, right? It doesn't further complicate that process that they have to go through.
That is correct, uh, it wouldn't be no additional, uh, workload on them. Again, if, by adopting these ordinances, if you did that, and if we cite an individual, um, we would cite them for that ordinance. Who's gonna prosecute, whether it's the DA's office or whether the city's attorney's office, is something that's gonna be discussed, you know, uh, moving forward.
Right.
But, but the ordinance itself, it will not, uh, uh, add any additional workload.
Okay, thank you, and, and it seems like it's been alluded to multiple times that the key here is the difference between going to the DA versus the city prosecutor, and then how that is kind of bundled together from a city's perspective, so it seems like at least that's the big preview from, for, for two weeks from now.
That's the big preview, and that's why adopting a quality-of-life, personal-conduct ordinance that is strong, thorough, clear, um, at the level of a county ordinance or even in some, some cases approaching, you know, a state penal code, um, that's why it's important to get this step taken tonight, so that we can then introduce the next.
Okay, and then I guess, I, I have one last question, the DA cannot interfere with the city's process, is that correct?
The city has the right to, to prosecute city, city code violations, yes.
Okay.
If the DA would like to prosecute them, um, the DA can?
Well, no, I meant, can, can the, can the DA, like somehow legally interfere with us trying to?
No.
Okay, understood. Okay, um, yeah, I, I think, I think it's, it's something worth supporting, so I, I have no more comments, uh. If, uh, if we could entertain a, let's see, do we need a motion for this? Yes, um, can, can we, uh, can you, do we have a motion for, for this item, tenon?
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, and, and under the staff recommendation, it says introduce a way first reading of an ordinance. Do we need to actually call out the ordinance number, two, four, one, oh, seven, five?
Uh, yes, please do.
Okay. Well, uh.
Go ahead.
In that case, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, so Mayor, I move that, um, we introduce a way first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash ten seventy-five, amending the Temple City Municipal Code to improve public safety.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second? Are there any objections? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. All right, so, you don't, do you need to read?
The title.
Okay, please read the title.
Ordinance number twenty-four, one, zero, seven, five, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending provisions of the Temple City Municipal Code to comply with state law, improve city enforcement of municipal code violations, and due process, and to enhance public safety, health, and welfare.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if it's the pleasure of the council, second reading will be at your next meeting, uh, second meeting of February, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is ten B, discussion of ordinance amending section three dash five E dash ten of the Temple City Municipal Code to permit the city to temporarily exclude parkgoers who violate its laws.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council, thank you for the thorough discussion on the prior ordinance. This is a secondary element of what we're trying to achieve with some behavioral, and let me re- repeat, behavioral-based, not status-based, um, issues that we're facing at the park. Um, uh, the county of Los Angeles recently passed this ordinance as well because of some of the struggles that they were having at the park, and lowering it down to a level where, um, the, either the parks director or superintendents or, uh, individuals with authority could essentially go to a park patron and say, you know, you violated this part of the park, uh, rules, um, and regulations, and, and, and act some discretion to, you know, expel that person from the park for the day if there's another repeat violation, uh, you know, expelled it, and, and kind of an escalating, uh, approach to dealing with that individual. Um, we've dealt with that at, with our, um, field trips and our use of, um, and people going on buses. So if somebody goes on a bus and starts to create a disturbance and those kind of things, uh, we can essentially, you know, prohibit them from a future field trip or anything like that. This ordinance, um, in fact, would be, uh, primarily utilized, excuse me, utilized and enforced by our Parks and Recreation staff, and with a due process, uh, um, elements that would escalate in terms of appeals, and eventually, in, in this case, come to mean, um, for example, if somebody was expelled from the park for a week, uh, because of whatever repeat behaviors and, and, and their ejection from a facility over time. Again, our approach is education, and trying to find a compassionate way to deal with individuals. But for example, if we have individuals at, like Live Oak Park, um, and behavioral issues with some of our sports leagues, but you usually look to those sports leagues to deal with that individual. If those sports leagues come to us and say, hey, um, Mr. or Mrs. X has repeatedly done this behavior that violates the rule, and we're having struggles with that individual, can you come and assist us with that?
When you say can you come, will that, who will come?
Um, in this case, what will come is, in the evening, if it's in the evening, the park ranger, or in, or, or during the daytime, or in other, other times of the day, either the parks, uh, parks director or, um, some of the park supervisors as well.
So I'm doing a tournament game during the summer at Live Oak Park, and I got a parent who's acting kind of outrageous, okay? And he won't listen to what I'm saying or anybody else, who do I call?
Call, uh, we'll, call, we'll call the park office first.
Don't call the sheriff?
Uh, it, it, it depends on, it depends on the behavior.
I feel more comfortable calling sheriff, to be honest with you.
And that, and that's, and that's usually a great default place to go, I, again, we're, we're trying to find the place to de- escalate issues as quickly as we can and not, for lack of a better term, criminalize.
But, but I hate to put staff in that position, too.
And we, and I've talked, and, and I, and I, and Mayor Protem Chavez, I appreciate that, and I've talked with, uh, Director Matsumoto about this issue as well, and that's why they took the step with the administrative regulations that they imposed on the field trips as well. So they're, they are ready to deal with some of these issues, but again, it, I, I hate, I'm. There, they are ready to deal with some of these issues, but again, it, I, I hate, I'm sorry to use the word, but yes. It will depend on where that, where that behavior lies. And, um, on the, whatever spectrum that behavior lies. And again, the safety of the individual staff members is always, I know it's the, it's council's primary concern. It's my primary concern as well, so that they can go and deal with. To continue to create a safe environment for individuals.
Can they, I, I know with, um, foothill transit, we've had all the bus drivers now trained in de-escalating. Um, situations. So is there training that we can send the staff to that specifically deals with that type of training? So they have a skill set instead of just kind of throwing them into the sharks.
It's, that's a great, that's a great point. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist and part of our onboard, and part of. Uh, Director Matsumoto's onboarding with new staff talks about that tool, but I think with this, and this is a temporary ordinance for now. Um, that's something we'll, we'll try to continue to emphasize as well and see what other, maybe JPA or other entities could have some, some of those tools.
Sure they have some training. Um, we're not to questions yet, right? Cause you're still doing your report. I'm sorry.
Oops.
Do you have more, Mr.? No, I, do you, I mean, I lose them, I lose, I gotta write them down or I lose it. So that's why I wanted to ask him, was question, go ahead.
And so to your question, we're, you know, we're putting staff in that position. Well, obviously. If, we don't have to issue a warning if there's a felony or misdemeanor or violent behavior. Um, that's being exhibited by an individual. This is more of the, I'm gonna say lower level type of behavioral issues that happen at the park. Um, where we think we can de-escalate, um, and, and deal with the individual, but we're looking again at that, seeing if that. This has become a habitual problem. That habitual individual, Mr. Or Mrs. X who continues to do. That activity or that elite, that, um, exhibit that type of violation of our park rules. Uh, continuously so that we can have some teeth to go with them and. Come to them and say, okay, you're banned from the park for a day. Okay, second time around, banned from the park for a week and escalate it from there.
So it kind of can fall back on the, the other ordinance for that section that says.
I'll talk, I'll, I'll let the city attorney kind of explain why there's the two different ordinances. Um.
Sure, this, so, conduct in the park could, could give rise to. Uh, a, a penalty, including a misdemeanor penalty under the other ordinance. This is taken. This allows in certain situations where maybe the enforcement arm, be it city staff or the sheriff's department, doesn't want to go the criminal route. But does want to resolve a problem. And, um, as, as Mayor Protem said. He can be involved in running baseball games and the problem can be solved if somebody is forced to leave the park under this ordinance. They have to leave for the rest of the day. The next day when they come back, they're either gonna be much more well behaved. Or as a repeat violator, they can be subject to a longer ban, but maybe it's decided that that conduct. Is enough to now trigger, um, their, their first citation under the criminal ordinance. That's fine. Um, but this, this allows, as, as the city manager said. Allows city staff for actions that don't rise to the level of needing law enforcement, to tell somebody, you've got to get out of the park. Get, get out, go away, you can come back tomorrow, here's your written notice. Um. That is a, a, for a lot of people, that's kind of a shocking enough punishment that they will now comply.
And if they don't comply?
Then you raise it from a day to a week to a month and, and continue to escalate.
During, during COVID, we had a situation where there was, uh, I guess he was a father or a coach. Uh, practicing football in the park. And we had said that was a no-no.
Right.
Uh, park staff told him he had to leave. He raised holy hell.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember that.
I do. And, and we had no.
What recourse did we have?
At that point, we had to go right to criminal, cause that's all we had was to say you're trespassing because the park's closed. Uh, this allows us some other tools. Long-term ban that ultimately becomes criminal. Um, we can do that now. And, and I, I also wanna sort of reiterate something the city manager said. Uh, the county just adopted this. Uh, it is, I believe now law, although we might still be a week or two away from it passing its, its thirty day period. Um, so we're gonna be watching very closely to see how things go for the county, um, what kind of successes they have. Obviously watching our own, what kind of successes we have, what kind of issues we have. If we need to tweak it as we go along, we certainly can, can bring it back to you. Um, but we thought it was a very big and good step by the county and we wanted to bring that to Temple City as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, any, uh, council questions? Uh, Councilmember Scar?
No further questions.
Councilmember Yu?
Uh, just one clarification question. So the other, uh, the first ordinance that we just passed. That will require a, a court order to implement, right?
Yes.
That one would be, yes, be, folks being cited, it had to be appropriate for a judge. This one, on the other hand, is just an exclusion citation issued by staff.
Yes.
There's no.
Or even a writ notice.
Judication on this, right? And then I wasn't, I was reading, trying to read it, um, but I wasn't really clear as to. You, you talk about day, several days a week, a month, you know, there. So I don't know, actually, it wasn't clear how many days people could be, uh, excluded.
It, again, that will, there will be some level of discretion in terms of. Making some in, independent and out of judgment by the park staff. What I'll be doing in working with the park staff is. Got, getting a report back and also too, because I'm part of the kind of, uh, due process ability for. The complaint to come to me, uh, for, to either uphold or overturn or whatever, or whatever other things that we would do. In terms of alleviating the issue. So, um, it is, it's, it is somewhat vague in that sense. Um, and I think as we're working through the process, we will try to. Uh, and I'll be, be happy to report back to council with a little bit more rigorous.
So.
Schedule.
So then, so the appeal process according ordinance here goes to you?
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't go anywhere else?
Correct.
It doesn't go to say the Public Safety Commission?
Correct.
They could probably take a writ to court, I bet.
Always, always. And, and that's why you wanna have a quick and definite process. City manager's a good level for that. Um, and if they took a writ off of that, they would take a writ off of that.
Will, will you wear, be wearing a black robe at the end of this time?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I can let you borrow one.
Thank you for that offer, Mayor Protem.
Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, any more questions?
No, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
So, so I think Vin, Vincent asked us, so we don't know at this point. What's the longest ban there can be, right? I mean.
Well, uh.
Is, is it saying that?
So, yeah, let me walk you through it briefly, so.
Just real briefly, I don't wanna.
Okay, so there's, there's removal, which is get out for the rest of the day. And then there's exclusion. In general, exclusion is for thirty days. Uh, if you get a second exclusion for the same violator. Within twelve months, it's sixty days and a third is ninety days. At that point, you're almost to the end of the year. Um.
Well, not if it, if you started in January.
Not if it's in January, but, but you're close, cause you're, you're.
So the ninety days is the longest.
Ninety days is the longest unless, uh, you have something that constitutes a felony. Something that constitutes property damage of a thousand dollars or more or dangerous or threatening behavior, which is defined.
Well, then that shifts to another arena then, right? I mean.
And then, and then that jumps it to sixty, one-twenty and one-eighty days.
Wait, as a, as a, in, in, per this ordinance?
Per this ordinance.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is Brian can tell that person how long?
If it's a felony, property damage.
Wait, who determines it's a felony though?
If it's, if it's behavior that would constitute a felony.
Okay.
Which.
That will be determined by staff?
That, that would generally be determined by staff working with law enforcement. Is this enough to consti, is this enough to have charged a felony?
Would it be egregious?
Why, then why don't we just give it to the sheriff to prosecute through the city prosecutor's office rather than messing around with it through Brian's office for ninety days, a hundred and twenty days or?
We, we can do that as well. We can do both because this is not a criminal action, so there's no double jeopardy that would apply. This is a separate item that would give the city some teeth to remove someone from a park for. Again, egregious conduct. Really for, um, the good of the community, so that other community members, while a criminal case is pending. Don't have to deal with that person repeating their behavior in the park.
So, but this, this ordinance doesn't prevent the sheriff from getting involved?
Not at all.
Okay.
And it anticipates that law enforcement can get involved and be part of this.
Because I could tell you, I mean, I could tell you, I should write a book about Little League baseball and parents, okay? I mean, one night we were at Live Oak Park, we had to lock ourselves in the score booth because people were getting so rowdy that we were afraid for our lives. And we didn't call the park. We didn't call Adam. We called the sheriff.
And as you should.
And they were out there right away, okay? And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not bypassing the sheriff's office.
Not at all, sir.
And we, and again, getting back to my point, I really am reluctant to put our staff in the position of enforcing some, there's some pretty crazy people out there. Uh, this, last summer, we had a guy barbecuing hot dogs over by the snack bar. Which is again, in violation of the park rules. And, uh. I, I wasn't there that night, but I think they called somebody from the staff over and they came over real politely and said, I'm sorry, sir, but you can't do that. Guy said, I don't care what you say, I'm doing it. I don't know, and I think he finished and then he left, but that was it. Um, so, you know, it, these, some of these people are pretty crazy and I, I, I can appreciate the fact that we wanna de-escalate things, but. Hate to say it, in our world today, things don't get de-escalated very often, it seems like, until somebody really gets. I liked the first ordinance, it gave us some teeth. Now this second ordinance is unfortunately, but I, I see the need for it. I have no, no problem with that, so. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna re, go by revisit dates, because when I read the ordinance, it says removal is for the, for the balance of the day. And then it seems like the next thing is exclusion. And exclusion from base what I'm reading would start with thirty days, right? It does start with thirty. There's, there's nothing in between, right? Shouldn't there be something in between? Because I could see the thirty, ninety, hundred and twenty, hundred and eighty days, right? Those increments seems kind of makes sense, but it seems to go from balance of the day to thirty days.
If, if the city council would like to change that, that would be a minor change that would not have to be reintroduced. You could change. The first to be fifteen days, the second to be thirty and the third to be sixty. That would be totally acceptable. I could make those three changes on the ordinance right now. And that would not have to be reintroduced for a new first reading. So that's my voice, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I think I had a question about the appeals process, but it seems like that's been answered. My, originally I was gonna ask. Would, would there be an avenue to appeal it to a commission? So the current way it's being proposed, the answer is no. The city manager is the highest level. Is that correct?
And, and part of that is we also want it to, uh, occur quickly.
Yeah.
And especially in the case now for moving to a fifty day initial exclusion. You don't wanna wait to schedule a commission hearing that might be two to three weeks away. Um, during which time the fifteen days would run. So you wanna let the city manager act immediately, within a day or two, and then move on from there.
Okay, I have a, I'm just wondering, do, do we have, uh, a lot of these things happening? Like, is your workload gonna quadruple with this, Brian?
I don't, no, I don't see it happening. It's, it, these are, again, as we talked about with the other ordinance. I don't see several, I don't see a ton of cases coming down a month.
It just, to me, it seems minor.
Yeah.
I don't know, we got those pickleball court guys here now, you know?
We could be having some issues.
Might get tough.
All right, so my, my other question is exclusion, is it exclusion from all parks? Or is it exclusion from a specific park that they violated?
It is written as exclusion from the park where you are violating, but your compounding issue, your first, second, third violation. Can be at multiple parks, but each exclusion is only for the park in which you committed the wrongful act.
Okay. And let's see, I'll add one question.
Are we just thinking about changing the days?
Well, hold on, one, one, one more question about the. So it says either the Parks and Recreation Director or the Sheriff would have the authority to issue the warnings and the exclusions, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that means regardless of who's there, they would follow the same schedule of exclusions?
Uh, yes.
Okay, but then that would require whoever's there to have prior knowledge of, if that person is a repeat offender.
Part of what we're gonna have to do is, and working with, with the dedicated team is kind of educate the staff. I would educate the, the department and let them kind of know. How shall I say it? Here is the list of issues that we've been facing at the park. Here's the identifying. Uh, out, uh, the identifying, uh, features of the individual and what they've done and so that'll be communicated. Um, it. It can get a little complicated, I'm sure, with rotation, but I mean, well, our primary conduit to that will be our dedicated team. Who works on these quality of life issues all the time and, um, and they do a good job of, of communicating with patrol. To ensure that, that they at least have that information.
Okay, and, and just as a kind of an implementation question, because it's saying. Before issuing an exclusion order, the Parks and Recreation Director or Sheriff would issue a warning to the park patron. That would be excluded, informing them that they need to stop, et cetera, et cetera. So that means in our case, only Director Matsumoto.
Or designee.
Or, or designee, okay, all right, I missed that part. Okay, then that, that clears it up. All right, thank you. Then let's open the public comment first before we get any further. Anyone would like to address the city council? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to a final council comments. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
I honestly don't have a problem with doing the. Kick them out for a day and then they have to wait thirty days. Only Vincent, because I think we're dealing with adults. They're, you know, they're not children. I mean, they're adults and it, especially if you're at a park where there's children. I mean, you don't wanna have bad behavior with adults and children seeing that. I mean. And then it's more work for Brian, cause it's only fifteen days. Then, you know, if they do it again, then it's thirty days anyway, so. I don't know, I, I, I think nip it in the bud from the beginning, you know, teach them a lesson. You know, you don't respect the rules and the people that. You're around, then stay home for thirty days. But other than that, um, okay.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Um, I'm okay with the ordinance, I just, I question the enforcement aspect of it. I don't know who. I mean, are we gonna post this guy's picture on the board or something somewhere so we know he's not allowed in the park? Uh, you have different staff there on different days? I mean, how do they know that this guy is and, I mean, that.
That would be Adam's job.
I guess, somebody's gonna have to do it, but I, you know, I, I guess you feel confident you guys can handle it. I'm sure there'll be some. Things that fall through the cracks once in a while, but the intent is there, obviously. And, you know, I think for the most part, I think someone mentioned earlier, I think it's Fernando, that. Uh, you know, you, you tell these people or they, they say, you, you tell them and then the, for the most part, they'll, they'll behave. I mean. You know, the hot dog guy at the park never came back and did hot dogs again, but, you know, I mean, because he was told he couldn't do it, so. I think for the most part, most adults will, will cooperate once a person of authority tells them not to do it. Of course, you're gonna get a problem here and there, but, uh, yeah, I think the enforcement's gonna be maybe a little bit tough, but. If you guys can handle it, you can handle it. And, you know, like I said, like, like the first ordinance gives us another tool in the toolbox and, uh, you know.
Those Little League parents are notorious.
Little League is tough, man, I'll tell you, it's gotten me gray hairs. But otherwise, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Yu? Any final thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, I also think that I, I, even though I asked. Yeah, I I I also think that I I, even though I asked a question about fifteen days or or uh something between, I I do agree with my fellow council members that yeah, because in 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 closer reading here, it says, uh, we shall issue a warning, so they already got a warning. And the next thing is um is uh removal for the day and then so the thirty days really like a third, you know, in fraction, so. Yeah, so, you know, if they are adults, that's probably enough warning. I mean, this is their third chance. Right? So I I'm okay with the with the ordinance as is.
Are you advocating going to the thirty days?
No, no, it starts with warning.
Yeah.
The day, remove for the day, and then exclusion for thirty days. I was just asking, was it intended, how it was written, that it start with thirty days?
I agree.
Thank you. I I also agree. Uh I, my only other comment is I would ask that staff be considerate of potential language barriers in enforcement. Just because I I I hope it never happens, it never comes down to it. But there could be some misunderstanding in in communicating that, and um I I don't know if our park staff is equipped to handle that.
Give something in writing to give to them?
So that might be another good idea, yeah.
No, it's so. Very valid point, sir.
In terms of the communication of the warning, um, let's be mindful that, you know, that that could be a a challenge, although I I hope it's not a common thing. So if 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 the occurrences itself isn't already common, then this adds kind of like another layer that hopefully is is even less common, so.
Valid point.
Yeah, but otherwise, I I concur and 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 appreciate the the input from from everyone on how we could just make make our parks better, so. All right, with that, um, if anyone would like, we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we introduce in way of first reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash ten seventy-four, amending the Temple City Municipal Code permit the city to temporarily exclude parkgoers who violate applicable laws.
We have a we have a motion and a second. Any objections? All right, seeing none, uh may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Council member Viscara?
Yes.
Council member you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes.
Did you get that motion? I just realized my thing was not. Oh, okay.
Let me hear it, yes, sir. We we got it. And uh uh may may the city clerk please read the title of the ordinance?
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance number twenty-four one zero seven four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temple City, California, amending section three dash five eight dash ten, temporary exclusion of violators of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to the temporary exclusion of parkgoers who violate applicable laws.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll move on to update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of council. Just a few things. Um one, want to thank the Temple City Chinese American Association, along with park staff and photography by Mr. Jambasian of our this last Saturday's Lunar New Year Festival. I, my personal opinion, but I'm a little biased. I think it was one of our best ones yet. Um, we do have neighborhood watch happening on February fifteenth, five thirty tacos, free dinner for everybody, so you don't have to worry about um making the decision to come to the meeting at five thirty at Temple City High School. Um, the end of the month is going to be extremely busy, um, including on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at six P M, right next door at the Women's Club will be the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four State of the City presented by Mayor Mann. We will have food at the beginning reception, and then uh Mayor Mann will deliver on behalf of the city council the State of the City. Um, along with that, the Camellia Festival, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. And as we had in twenty twenty, um, our sister city, Wollin County, Taiwan, will be with us with their students. They will be in the parade. They will be performing uh that day as well. So we're excited to have them back with us, uh and uh and and them enjoying the Camellia Festival and being part of one of our rich traditions here in Temple City. So, busy end of the month, um, and uh.
How about the dinner?
Uh, the dinner is just, the dinner is just with us. Um, so we will be hosting a dinner for uh the delegation on the twenty-fourth in the evening. So, that is it, Mayor Mann.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
An update from our city attorney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I wanted to introduce you to Senate Bill nine fifteen, which deals with uh driverless car operations, and in particular, driverless car operations, uh charging passengers for rides. Uh, the county of Los Angeles took this up this week um and is supporting Senate Bill nine fifteen, because nine fifteen would prohibit autonomous vehicle services from operating in a jurisdiction unless the jurisdiction passed an ordinance to allow them to operate. Right now, it's one of those unclear areas. As as you all know, a taxi cab company can't operate primarily within your city unless you allow it, but obviously, uh Uber and Lyft can. So uh nine fifteen would say that any driverless operations where people pay for rides uh could not come in your city unless um unless you authorized it. Uh, I tend to think it's a good idea, but I wanted to introduce it to you, and if you are interested in joining the county um in sending a letter to uh your state representatives uh expressing your support, then I would want to bring that back uh for um that bring that letter back on consent at your next meeting, so that you can approve that and have the mayor and the city manager sign it. So if you're interested, I'll be bringing that back.
Do we allow taxis now?
Yes.
I haven't seen a taxi in years.
Well, I see them here a little bit.
Do you, really?
Yeah, I see them.
Wow.
I have a, I have someone on my block who takes it every day.
All right, well, with that, I will bring that back. Thank you all very much.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next we have a council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Just gonna ask council member Sternquist if you wanted to start us off with our with our standing committee for the sorry, the ad hoc for the future development of city property at ninety fifty Los Tunas Drive, also known as the Old Chamber site.
Yes, it was a good meeting, and um we met with um Director Matsumoto and what was the young lady's name? The the name of the group again?
R S G group.
R S G, the consultants who brought back some valuable statistics for us to take a look at. Uh, moving forward, we're going to have staff come back with some specific ideas for use at the um Old Chamber site if we would use it as a open space or a public space. Right, do you want to add something?
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah. And and our R S G, um, just just to add a little bit of context, a at least what was really helpful for the meeting was for us to kind of understand the the um, some of the new laws that might impact how a city would use or convert space, especially if we're transferring over to, say, like a private developer or so. Um, so it kind of cleared up and helped us eliminate certain options, just because there was just a lot of infeas infeasibility with certain uses. And so at least between council member Sternquist and I, we kind of uh asked them for more options about things that uh was consistent with the the last time this was brought before full council. So looking at park, open space, or some kind of a public use, like a, whether it's a more parking or or an empty lot, or or reuse of the existing existing building. So so they they didn't have specific things, because they were trying to eliminate other factors and and new laws that were being introduced.
Affordable housing was one that we could right off the bat eliminate, and without any um worries about having the state saying you're not doing your due diligence in trying to provide affordable housing in the city. So I think that was very helpful also.
Yes, that that's a great point, because we, the size of a lot doesn't meet the state threshold, and so it didn't apply to us for for that case, so. So we're we're looking forward to to more specific ideas.
Didn't we address this issue previously as a full council? Was this the same company that spoke to us, or is this a different company?
Different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the key key difference was that new law would change sort of how that impacted us. Um, and so we got some more clarification, which will obviously be shared with with full council.
Called, um, Greg, the surplus?
Surplus. Surplus land.
Surplus land.
All right. So thank you, council member Sternquist. Uh, and and also, uh, last week, um, we also met with the school district for the uh school district city standing committee meeting. Uh, one thing to note is uh now board member Mary Snead is, and Donna Georgino are part of it. Previously, it was Matt Smith. Um, so we welcome Mary as as part of uh that meeting. Uh, we had some really great discussions. The most important and exciting one was uh there, we're on the cusp of having a joint use agreement um to be, that could be brought back for full council's consideration. I know uh Mr. Our city manager Cook and the superintendent Arkuna are on the verge of finalizing and putting that together. So that was something that uh board member Georgino and Snead and I um were very excited and happy about making progress. Um, and and to somewhat quote uh board member Georgino, that was something she ran on. She mentioned that that was one of her campaign platforms, so she was uh, she she was over the moon about that. Uh, and and we we discussed uh traffic, uh transportation, mostly traffic and pedestrian safety issues in and around school areas. They had some questions for uh our city manager regarding the safe routes to school grants and programs. So we will do our best to assist them in that in what we can, um, as well as any kind of traffic safety issues, which which we have been been doing.
Well, you might like to um have Brian send out or Greg to cancel the SCAG report that uh gave some really great options for, um, I forget what they called it, but it was specifically around a school, and they actually did temporary planning, I guess you would, where they put up either these pillars, and they had a a central place where the parents would, if you were walking to pick up a child, they would go there. It was really interesting. One of the best presentations, I can't do it justice, from um SCAG on specifically safe routes, and I know Brian, you're gonna be looking into that with um.
Yeah, we're gonna see, we're gonna see if that's an applicable um grant or 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 funding source.
So that you can apply through the state, and then if you don't get funding from the state for the project, then it automatically gets kicked down to a regional um pot of money that might be available. But it it's it's not a long presentation, it's maybe half an hour, but just to see how they did this and how well it's working. And it's really was a thinking way outside the box from traditional ways that school districts have pickup and drop off. So I'll have them send that out at your leisure, try to listen to it, because I think it's really a valuable tool that we might be able to implement.
Shouldn't we be sending that to the schools rather than to us?
Well, I think it's.
I mean, they're, it's their problem. It's our problem, because it's our city, but it's their parents.
But it is a safe route to school. So I think it's.
So they can't apply for, they can't apply for the funding, only we can?
I don't know, Brian, do you?
It's a joint, in some cases, a joint application. In some cases, it's exclusively the uh cities.
The city, so I think it's just both wise for both uh the school district and all of us to be aware of.
Okay, thanks for sharing. And and just one last thing, uh, we discussed at the standing committee meeting was uh just arrangements for our sister city delegation from Taiwan. They're bringing students, so they express some interest in visiting the high school uh and and getting a chance to meet with with uh their peers here in in the U S. So that was something that they did last time when they came in twenty twenty. Obviously, it's a different group of students this time.
How long are they gonna be here? I thought they were only gonna be here a weekend.
No, they'll they'll be here for a little, about five days or so, but, I mean, they have other stuff on their itinerary. Uh, but the two things we were trying to help make arrangements for them was being able to interface with the the students want to interface with with our Temple City High School students, and also their Department of Education would like to meet with uh the school district to discuss uh, you know. They'll they'll have their own agenda. So we we thank the school district for for working with us on on that. And uh, yeah, that's that's uh some of the main points from the from the meeting. Are there any others standing or ad hoc committees that that I missed? Okay. All right, then next we'll go to council items separate from the regular agenda. Uh, we'll start with council member Viscara.
Nothing really tonight.
Thank you. Council member you?
Nothing too much. I also want to echo um the lunar celebration was a wonderful event, and I would say it's the best. It's the best we ever had, and um I would also compare that with some of the other bigger uh event that at other cities. I think ours is just right. I think it's just a small town. It's uh really more family, more neighborhood, more community, less commercial. So I think we we did it the best. So, thank you, city manager. Thank you, city staff uh for, and then the Chinese American Association for do for hosted, uh helping to co-host it. So, one final note, uh, as some of you know, I'd be uh going off for uh knee replacement surgery March first, so uh in order to uh make sure I don't catch anything before, so I may uh, you may not see me much a couple of weeks before the operations, and that means including perhaps the the mayor's uh state of the city, and some of the festivity uh with Camellia Festival and and uh and their sister city as well, so. Unfortunately, I that, the day is not my choosing. You know how it is. They give you a day and you shall show up.
You can have a lot of replacement parts.
I will, we'll we'll see who has more metal.
You have a great surgeon, right?
Yeah, yours.
Mine.
Yours, yours.
Well, well, we we wish you the best in in your health and recovery.
So we'll come back and give you as more metal parts in the body, so.
You'll be stronger than ever. All right, thank you, council member you. Uh, council member Sternquist?
Um, just briefly, I shared with Tom the note from the sanitation district, it came saying that they've had some issues with the capacity, holding the capacity because of the amount of rain, so with that, they've been uh using extensive pumping, brought in some other pumping um machines. But you'll be hearing Cabrillo Beach, what was the other one, Tom? Do you recall? There's three beaches, but they're gonna be talking about it probably in the next few days. San Pedro, Long Beach area, where they're shutting down um the beaches, just because they can't keep up with it right now. But other than that, um, the Lunar New Year was really nice and fun. And kudos to our elected officials. I know it's um election time, but Judy Chu did come out and Catherine.
Was Mike there?
Mike was there also, so it really is nice that they take the time to come out and spend some time with their constituents.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Driverless vehicles? Do we not have enough problems with the driver vehicles, and we have to have driverless vehicles too? Or maybe that's an improvement, I don't know. We'll see. That's crazy. Um, just real quick, you know, Pastor Patrick, who was here tonight to do our invocation, I, uh, he was um Jane had given a a talk, you know, he is the new pastor at First Baptist, which was Jim Walden's church previously. And he's been there for about a year, as he said, and now he was ordained this past Sunday. Uh, and because Jane had spoken there before, they invited her and I came along and as the other spouse, and uh, we had a good time. It was a lot of people, a lot of Temple City people, obviously, go to that church. Uh, and so um, it was it was real nice. They had it in the gym. I'm sure many of you have been in the in the new gym. And uh, he was just recently ordained, so he, actually, people call him Pastor Patrick, but technically, he's a reverend now, so. I asked him, what do you want to be called? Reverend Patrick or Pastor Patrick? But he just said, don't matter, doesn't matter. But really nice guy, and we had a good time, and uh just want to give a shout out, and and he seems truly interested in in being a part of the community. Uh, we know Jim uh was was a big part of the community, and I think I think Patrick will follow in his step, so we look forward to to uh working with him in the future, so I'm glad he was able to come tonight. And I'm sorry I was late for the um Lunar New Year. I had to work that day, believe it or not, and uh, but I did come out, come in by late. but I did come in by later, and the food was great, and there were a lot of people there. So it was, looked like a very great event, and so kudos to staff and the Temple City Chinese Association, did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to verify with our city manager, is the community shredding event still on?
Sorry, we're clarifying that, so that may be adjusted.
It might, okay, I didn't want to...
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Announce it without kind of...
We're coordinating some activities, so sorry about that.
Okay.
We'll get that straightened out.
Alright, but I too agree, I thought the Lunar New Year event was the best we've done so far, so thank you to the Temple City Chinese American Association and our incredible Parks and Recreation Department and staff. And also to, since Councilmember Sternquist's earlier point, it was the first time I heard both our Congress member Chu, you know, Assembly Member Mike Fong, and Supervisor Catherine Barker all say the same thing during the event, which was like, they appreciated how it felt uniquely Temple City. And I think part of it is because, I guess, some of us been on council long enough where we've been to maybe a lot of these Lunar New Year events, and we've seen the lion and dragon dancers. The ones we got this year and last year, they're one of the few that actually stay around and let the kids interact with them. So a lot of these are professionals, they do their thing, blah, 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 and then they're off the stage and they're gone. They're gone, so, and some of the parents, I think, were really excited about that, because you don't often get to have your kid right up next to the lion, and they could take a picture with them, so I think they appreciated that a lot.
The people that were the lion seemed to be very young.
Yeah. Yeah.
And did you notice they had little light girls? That were the head of the lions?
So they can lift them.
And a larger, I don't know if it was a boy or girl behind them.
Both girls, actually. I think that was a really nice touch with the, the three smaller lions were, they're all girls who were handling. And then you could tell the girls are a lot more, should I say, caring of the little ones. They were like three, four-year-old kids, or two came out and tried to touch the lion, and the girls were handling, the lion were allowing them to touch it. It was so caring, it was just amazing to watch. And then to your point, all three electors were there, they were looking, and I think Catherine Barker, Supervisor Barker was saying, you know, this is what Temple City is about, was about family, kids, you know, all getting, get it together, having a great time, so... I took some pictures of the kids in line, and you know...
It was great.
Great stuff, yeah.
And also whoever came up with the bubble wrap idea, I'll be honest, initially, I was really skeptical. I was like, I don't know about this. And then when the kids started showing up and stepping, I was like, oh wow, this is really having that effect.
And it sounded like firecrackers.
I stepped, I sneaked in and did one step, too.
So thank you to our Parks and Rec Department and Association again for coming up with such a creative idea, though. That was definitely great, so...
Thank you.
And we lucked out with the weather, so that was also very nice. And yeah, besides that, a very busy month for us, so yeah, I'm looking forward to the Camellia Festival, as well as our sister city delegation, and yeah, I want to say I'm looking forward to the State of the City, but at the same time, I'm apprehensive of it, but I have a great support from city staff. I want to publicly acknowledge and thank Eliana Flores and Liz Ortiz for their hard work and helping me with it. Couldn't have done it without them. And all the department heads for helping with the content, so really appreciate that. Alright, with that, we move on to the last part, is additional public comments. Anyone would like to address the city? Alright, then with that, we are adjourned, good night.